Trace the Lord, trace the Lord, trace the Lord. Hallelujah, 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 amen. O rabakka, rabakka, tira balaka, thikka rabalaka, tira baniya. Hallelujah, 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 hallelujah. Yesu veniir, periyavare, paari nillumakku paayi devanudon.
Yesu veniir, periyavare, paari nillumakku paayi devanudon. Parathreelum meyalal, veerar milai, thigatlam neerintanjam isnada. Yesu veniir, periyavare, paari nillumakku paayi devanudon. Yesu veniir, periyavare, paari nillumakku paayi devanudon. Parathreelum meyalal, veerar milai, thigatlam neerintanjam isnada. 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 Parathreelum meyalal, veerar milai, thigatlam neerintanjam isnada.
Amen. Kadurisamooda kaistotharamanuva? Trace the Lord, trace the Lord, trace the Lord. Aviyana ordeyamaathu manana alugai kaistotharamanuva? Parishutthanaamathukkumai muntavudaka?
Glory be to God's holy name.
Irentham Timotheyu, irentham Adhikaaram, mundra, nanke, vasanangali vasipom.
Let us turn to second Timothy, chapter two, verses three and four.
Niyum Yesu Kristuukku nalapochevaganaithiing anubavi, tandil sevakam pandukarai evanum, thannais sevakam elidikkondavanku ehchavanai irukumbadi, pilaippukadutha aluvankalil sikkikollamattan.
Thou therefore endure hardness as a good soldier of Jesus Christ, no man that warret entangle himself with the affairs of this life that he may please him who hath chosen him to be a soldier.
Kaduriyaparishutthanaamathukkumai muntavudaka?
Glory be to God's holy name.
Timotheyukku pauli elidumbuludhe, avani oru porchevaganai, avar varnikirath.
Saint Paul writes to Timothy illustrating him as a soldier.
Oborun nadugalakkum porchevakarkal unde.
Yes, there are soldiers for every country.
Ananal namo, inda ulaganaadugalakaana oru porchevagan alla.
But we are no soldiers for these worldly countries.
Nam parlogar desatukuriyae oru porchevakarala, nam neemikappadurukaram.
We are appointed soldiers for heavenly kingdom.
Modalavudhe nam yaridinbadhe, nam purindukolavendiyade avasiyam.
Firstly, understand who we are.
Enriki nam inda markathil adiyaduthu vaisomaa?
The time we have stepped into this path.
Appodudhe nam tandil sevakam elidikkondavarkai.
Then we have given ourselves to be chosen.
Devanudiyayarmila, militriile, onudiyayapaya elidappadurukarade.
Your name is written in the military of God.
Tandil sevakam elidikkondai evanum, pilaippukka adutha aluvankalil sikkikollamattan.
And no man that warret entangle himself with the affairs of this life.
Omilai ettanivere, andavurudiyay porchevaganaga, kattar ungalai vaithurukarar, endrara, darushanam udayavulaga, inda kaale vellele, ningal kana podukirikai.
This morning, how many of you have the vision that God has appointed you soldier?
Oru veela, ni oru viswasiyankara, arivu onakirukkalam.
You may have the knowledge that you will rebel.
Ilanthal, oolyakkaravil enra, arivu rukkalam.
A knowledge that you were a servant of God.
Ananal idukulai marindurukkara thana unmai thanmai enna?
But what is the fact hidden?
Ningalum, naanum, oru porchevakarkai.
You and me are soldiers.
Andha vishyate, nam marandhu vedakudada.
Never forget it, sir.
Enndhal, andavur bayangara barakramasaliay, oru yuttaveeranai pola, yarangi varugara kalangalil, nam irukaram.
Because we are in this time, God comes down as a mighty man of war.
Enndhal, namakkuvirodomai ellumbura sakthigalai, avar appudithaan eduthu nirkkaradaka vedam sutikattukarade.
Because the Bible points out that he stands like that against the powers.
Avaru yuttanali, oru poradukaradu pola, oru yuttaveeranai pola, poradukare oru kaalam.
This is a time he works as a mighty man in the time of war.
Shagariya, padinanga Adhikaaram, muna vasanathai parkumbuludhe.
Turn into Zechariah fourteen three.
Vedam enna solukarade?
What is the word of God saying?
Avar yuttanali, poradukaradu pola, andha wallamigalodu poradukarar.
He fights against those powers as in the day of battle.
Kattar purappattu yuttanali, poraduvadu pol, andha jadigalode poraduvar.
Then shall the Lord go forth and fight against those nations as when he fought in the day of battle.
Kaduriyaparishutthanaamathukkumai muntavudaka?
Glory be to God's holy name.
Indha vasanangali, adipadile parkumbuludhe, avar oru yuttaveeranai pola varukarar.
On the basis of this verse, he comes as a mighty man.
Bayangara barakramasaliay, naan onodu guda irukkaren endu solukarar.
And he says, "As a mighty terrible man, I am with you."
Irentham nalakamam, padimundra Adhikaaram, pani rendha vasanathai modalpogiri parkumbuludhe.
Second Chronicles thirteen twelve, the first portion.
Ido, devan engal seenabadiya, engalode kooda irukrar.
And behold, God himself is with us for our captain.
Andavur namudiyay captainaga, thala kartanaga, nikka kudiya oru kalangalil irukumbuludhe, naamavurukku pindaga, oru yuttaveeranakla, porchevakarala, nirkkavendiyade, namudiyay kadamayaga irukarade.
In this period, when God stands as a captain, it is our duty to stand as soldiers behind him.
Ananal, adhenarathle, nam saulin porchevarla, ninndre, mudukukati vedakudada.
At the same time, we should not be soldiers of soul turning our back.
Nam seblonun, naptalim pola, porkalathu munaila, maranathukkutunindinirukumbadiyaga, alakka padtavarkai.
But we are called to be in cheer party of our lives, standing in the battlefront like zebu and the naktara.
Arumiyana sagodhre, sagodhreye.
Beloved brother, sister.
Onudiyay awalvil vendha, iduvarai ulaporadungali, ni yarudiyay porchevaganai, ninndurukkara.
Conflicts in your life, who soldier you were?
Modalam samvilile, nam parkumbuludhe.
Turning to first Samuel.
Sawuludiyay porchevakarkal, odi poivittarkai.
Soldiers of soul turn back.
Adi yavlu nirpandamano, oru nelavaram enbadhe, ningal sindhituparanga.
A pitiable situation it is.
Onnu samvil, padinela, ivathinaankai parkumbuludhe.
First Samuel seventeen twenty four.
Israfil ellarum, andha manushanai kahnumbadhu, mikavum byappattu, avan mugathukku vilaki, odi povargal.
And all the men of Israel, when they saw the man, fled from him and were so afraid.
Ningal yarudiyay porchevakarkai?
Who soldiers are you?
Abishayakathai elandha, oru manidhanudiyay porchevakala, ningal irundhal, ungalakkum yuttakalam, ipuddithaan amayindukundarakum.
Soldiers of a man who is lost is anointing, your forefield will be like this.
Ananal, nyayadibadigal, Iindham Adhikarathe, nam parkumbuludhe.
But church is five, we say.
Iindham Adhikaaram, padinetta vasanathle.
Five eighteen.
Ange, porkalathu munaila, ninndra, renduverai kurithu choliyurukarade.
Two who stood in the battlefield.
Seblonun, naktalim, porkalathu munaila, thangal uyire ennamil, maranathukkutunindininradhal.
Seblan and naktali were people that jeffert their lives into the death in high places of the field.
Viswasa vaalkai, enbadhu oru porkalam.
Faith life is a battlefield.
Parishuttha vaalkai, enbadhu oru yuttakalam.
Holy life of warfields.
Adhaladhan, ebireyer, padinurama Adhikarathe, avargalai viswasa veeranalendru, nam varnikirara.
Therefore Hebrews eleven lists out the heroes of it.
Ni oru jabaviranai maravendam.
You should become a prayer warrior.
Ni oru yuttaveeranai maravendam.
Become a battle warrior.
Ni oru viswasa veeranai maravendam.
Become a faith warrior.
Ni oru parishutthavanai maravendam.
Become a saint.
Ni adilatho tu poohukudada.
Never fail in it.
Priyam aanulai, andavur, andha manushanai kuritha, thannudiyay thittathai, pauli mulamaga, timotheyukku vilipaduthukarar.
God revealed his plan to Timothy through Paul.
Niyum kattaragi, Yesu Kristuukku, oru nalapochevaganai maruvaayaaga.
And you become a good soldier for Jesus Christ.
Adina nalapochevagan, ketapochevagan?
What is that good soldier and evil soldier?
Ketapochevagan, enbadhu, katti kodukaroru thanmai.
Evil soldier, he is treacherous.
Desathroghammanu oru vaalkai.
He is treacherous to the land.
Konjanalkalukkam unbagai, Indiaalay, border security forcele, vela patha, oru group vandavarkai, avuday bus kavindutthadu, Malay pradesathle, urundutthadu.
Few days before, the bus of a BASF, well, it rolled down the mountain.
Andha bus ulundhu, noringi boyvittadu.
And it was totally crushed.
Ellaruchethu ponnarak.
Everyone died.
Avargadde pettigalallam, andha vaagathil irundhu, odaindu, keel, ulundhu, chedari boyvittadu.
Their boxes also, it fell from the vehicle and was scattered.
Adha meetkum, padai, poi, meetpu, paniil, poi, eranginar.
Rescue team went for the rescue.
Anga poi, parthabududhe.
When they saw.
Oboruviralul, rivekku, viddukku, poranga, lechakana, kana, koodikana, kana, panangal, avga pettilarindhar.
Every hero, they were returning to their homes with lax with them.
Avungalukku chambalamai, ayira kanakla tha.
Their salary is just in thousands.
Adu fulla bankla, poiurudhe.
But everything goes in the bank.
Adu fulla familyki, chaapadukka, poiurudhe.
They goes to the family for food.
Ivan kayilai, edhavu, selavukka, tham, vichirukkam, mudiyyam.
He can have only his expenditure.
Ananal, lechakana, ekkadi, vandhadu?
But how come he had lax?
Apannam purindhu, leevukku, viddhrathukum, unnaala, borderle, oru koottathu, ulavoditu, panathavangi thanga.
Then they understood that they left a group of enemies through the border and got the money.
Anak kodi, pothurukaradu, India kodi tha.
But their flag was Indian flag.
Sambala vangradu, India, India, vangra.
Salary from India.
Ipputitroghammanukar, anegu porchevakarkal, Indiaalay, mattumella, ellanaadugalil, unde, viswasa vaalkailam, unde.
There are so many treacherous soldiers, not only in India, all over the world, even in faith life.
Vedam enna solukarade?
What is the word of God?
Manishakumaran, varumbuludhe, viswasa tehkanbaro.
The son of man, come and shall you find faith in us?
Viswasa throgham, mundin, erittal, oliyay, andha naal, varadu.
That day will not come except there be the falling of faith.
Arumiyana, namudiyavalkai, namai, oru nalapochevaganaga, kattar, edurbarkarar.
God expects us to be a good soldier.
Ni inda markathil, jeevanek, kodukumbadiyaga, oru vanchikarar.
He desires you give your life in this path.
Jeevanai, pettukollavirumbukaravan, adhi elandhubovan, elandhubogavirumbukaravan, adhi pettukollukarane, endu yesuchonar.
He that saveth his life shall lose it while he that loses it shall save us.
Vedatthale, nam palayarpatti, pudiyarpatti, parkumbuludhe.
In the new and the old testament.
Devanukaaga, porchevakarkal, unde, manushanukaaga, porchevakarkal, unde.
There are people who battled for the Lord and for man.
Niyo, tandil sevakam elidikkondavan.
But you have entangled in it.
Enneki, onudiyayapaya, abishayakathin mulamaga, aattukuttiyanudiyay jeeva, pustakathil, onupaya, elidappadado, adhumidya, maru, padippe, ni, indha, viswasa pathail, ni oru porveeran.
The day your name is written in the Lamb's book of life, on the other hand, you are the faith soldier.
Adukpinbu, indha ulagathukuriyakariyangala, ni edheliyin, sikkirakudada.
After that, don't be entangled with our fears of this life.
Oru pilaippukkaaga, ni poi solirakudada.
You should not lie before a child.
Konjam panathukaga, ni eamathi rakudada.
Don't cheat for little money.
Konjam amsa, ichegalukaga, ni engiyadu, poi, vildundu, sikkikollakudada.
Don't fall for the lust of flesh.
Adhalataan, Bible solukaradu, avan sikkikollamattan.
Therefore the Bible says, "He doesn't entangle."
Paavathala, sikkikollakudada.
Don't entangle in sense.
Kannigalila, ni sikkikollakudada.
Don't entangle in sense.
Manidavallamigalil, ni sikkikollakudada.
Don't entangle in the Bible.
Vishaasin, kannigalila, ni sikkikollakudada.
Don't entangle in the sense of the Bible.
Yendho oru kariyathle, ni sikkikollada, oru spereledappattu, oru sevakanaga, ni nirkkavendam.
You should be a soldier, not entangled in anything of this life.
Enakidapadichupududhe, achrima karindhu?
And it was really wonderful.
Ni kattaragi, Yesu Kristuukku, porchevagan, chollama, nalapochevaganai, irundhu, cholrar.
It's not said you be a soldier of Jesus Christ, but a good soldier.
Irendu ulagapooral, mudindurukarade.
There are two world wars over.
Adhalor, aalte, kaitanga, ni, epdipad, andha, bayangaramana, bundu viisnaga, onkooda, irundhadana, battalionalay, irundha, ellaruvay, chethupitana, ni, epdipadu, oru, rennum, mune, vedi, polachirukingan, kaitanga.
To one merit, it was asked, "How did you survive when only a battalion is dead?"
Saavu, nichian, terinchu pochay.
I knew that dead is sure.
Ananal, naanga, sandayae, porala.
Therefore I did not fight.
Apa, enna, panniga?
Then what did you do?
Gundatipatti, karandavanku, keel, poi, padukittu, avan, viki, maala, potu, retakoreya, padukittu, adhuvaduk, eladu, uttitu, poi, thanga, adhuk, parag, meetpu, pani, varambu, naangala, enditchittho.
I went and hid myself in the tunnel and finally at the rescue team, why we've just got her.
Ipputiyoo, oru team, irundhadaga, India, saratharam, solukarade.
Yes, Indian history says about Sashgroop.
Ivakallan, INA, eyindavanga.
They were in INA.
Indian national army, Subhasandrabos, sabailay, irundha, sat, avargadiyay, margin, group, irundha, oru team, lodi, arth, varthakai.
These were the words of a man who was in the team of INA during Subhasandrabos.
Chethuponam, vidi, ivanun, chethuponam, mari, nedichy, ivanla, enthan, India, naat, meetkupogara.
Acted to be dead under the dead corpses and how can he be in a soldier?
Viswasa vaalkai, oru yuttakalam.
Faith life is a battlefield.
Idle, koodikana, kana, vedi, chaiturukkararkai.
Crows have prevailed.
Palakoodikana, kana, vedi, tho tu, poi, urukkarar.
Crows are defeated.
Indha kadaisikala, yuttakalathle, unnayim, ennayim, devang, kodundurukkarar.
God has chosen you and me too for the last days' war.
Ananal, yuttai, Kristo vaalkai, enbadhu, ningal, nanakiramari, solabamana vaalkai, alla, aastumavuk, elai, paradal, manadilum, matta, sarirathilum, paadukal, siluvigal, unde.
Christian life is rest for the soul, but cross for the body and suffering.
Idenudiyay, punidhi, idenudiyay, markathil, oru mukkiamanu, undurukke, siluvay.
Sacredness of Christianity is cross.
Adha ningam, pa, taandi, pohvay, mudi, adha taandi, tha, ningal, unnaala, pohvano.
You have to take it and go forward.
Apa, nalapochevaganu, undu, ketapochevaganu, undu.
There are good and evil soldiers.
Apa, ningal, ketatche, porchevakarala, nalapochevakarkala?
Who are you, good or evil soldier?
Mattayil, suvi, shesham, ivaththi, elam, Adhikarathe, ivaththi, elavasanathle, irundha, muppatti, ora, vasana, vara, nam, kannokki, parkumbuludhe.
Matthew twenty seven, twenty seven to thirty one, we say.
Ange, desaadi, budhin, porchevakarkal, enkara, oru koottathai, betti, nam, Bible, padikiram.
One group called the soldiers of the governor.
Avargal, desaadi, budhin, porchevakarkal.
Soldiers of the governor.
Avargal, Yesu, in, porchevakarkal, alla.
They are not the soldiers of Jesus.
Vaasigal.
Appududhu, desaadi, budhin, porchevakar, Yesu, vay, desaadi, budhin, aranmanaila, kondupoi, porchevakarin, kootta, muluvakayim, avaridathil, koodivarasaidhu, avar vastirangalai, kalatri, sivappan, melangi, avarukku, uduthi, mulugalal, oru, mudi, pinni, avar sirasin, mail, vayithu, avar valadukai, ilor, koolai, koduthu, avar, unbagai, mulangak, padittu, yudharudiyay, rajave, walgu, enra, avari, pariyasampanni, avar, mail, thuppi, avari, koolai, eduthu, adai, avari, sirasil, adittargal, avari, pariyasampanina, pinbu, avar, koduthina, melangi, kalatri, aurdi vastirangalai, avarukku, uduthi, avari, siluvay, naraimbadi, konduponargal.
Then the soldiers of the governor took Jesus into the common hall and gathered unto him the whole band of soldiers and they stripped him and put on him a scarlet drop and when they had plaited a crown of thorns, they put it upon his head and read in his right hand and they bowed the knee before him and mocked him, saying, "Hail, king of the Jews!" and they spat upon him and took the reed and smote him on the head and after that, they had mocked him, they took the robe off from him and put his own raiment on him and led him away to crucify him.
Kaduriyaparishutthanaamathukkumai muntavudaka?
Glory be to God's holy name.
Ivargal, Yesu Kristuukku, nalapochevakarkal, alla, Yesu, vay, thundapadittina, porchevakarkai.
Not the good soldiers of Jesus Christ, but those who buffeted him.
Adhalataan, nalapochevakarkai, yar, ketapochevakarkai, yar, nam, ungalukku, vityasapadittin, nam, chollavirumbukaray.
Therefore I want to differentiate the good and evil soldiers.
Indha markathil, vandha, pinbu, ni, Yesu, kaaga, nirkkanametha, var, Yesu, vay, siluvaila, aray, oru kootta, mah, ni, maari, vedakudada.
After coming to this path, you should be a soldier of Jesus and not crucify him.
Satthi, engalai, nam, purindukundu, vaalkai, maatiyamake, vendi, nam, male, vildundhu, oru kadamay.
Understand the truth and meant our lives.
Indha desaadi, budhin, porchevakaradu, thanmai, enna?
What is this attribute of the soldier of the governor?
Desaadi, buddy, enna, solukarana, adhachivaa, ivanukku, solbutti, gadeyadu, suya, butti, gadeyadu.
No self-will and does not have the knowledge of what they say.
Tamil, soluvanga, onnu, solbutti, urukano, illavudhe, suya, butti, urukano, ma.
Either they have to understand what we say or do according to their say.
Indha pathigal, ellam, solbutti, ulavarkai.
But these are the ones, they do they what they say.
Yen, cholran, avanukku, thiri, la?
They don't know why he says.
Yesu, vay, siluvaila, aray, urukka, avan, ennanla, avagala, paadupaduthangan, paranga.
See how they buffeted Jesus to crucify him.
Avaruday vastaraththai, kalathinarkai.
They stripped him.
Sibankpangiyay, uduthinarkai.
Put on him the scarlet robe.
Mulmudi, suddinarkai.
Crowned him with crown of thorns.
Kayilai, oru, koolai, koduthaar.
Gave the reed in his hand.
Mulangal, padittu, pariyasampaninarkai.
Bowdeney and morten.
Avaruday mugathil, thuppinarkai.
Spat upon his face.
Avaruday sirasil, adittargal.
Smote on his hair.
Siluvaila, aray, kondugonarkai.
Took him to be crucified.
Ipputipatta, kariyangala, ellam, ivanu, senji, avga, avar, thimai, thinku, bha, seedhar.
They did so much of evil to Jesus.
Ningi, yooschi, paranga.
Just think.
Indriki, vaalkai, namudiyay vaalkai, epdii, urukaradu?
How is our life today?
Ni oru nalapochevagananala, thiingai, anubavi, poi, yarukkun, thiingu, seyamattai.
You be a good soldier, you will endure evil and not buffet anyone.
Renndu, kola, vityas, idhada?
This is the difference.
Naalapochevagan, thiingai, anubavi, pan.
Good soldier will endure hardness.
Ketapochevagan, matruvukku, thiingu, seyvan.
Evil soldiers will do hardness to others.
Avan, ningal, avargai, ninga, appudhi, oru, nimsha, trippi, paranga.
One minute, turn back to learn from them.
Ni, indha markathin, nimitha, thiingai, anubavi, kara, ya, indha markathil, vandha, pinbu, ni, matruvukku, thiingu, seyuraya.
In this path, are you enduring evil or doing evil to others?
Adi, enna, matruvukkali, enna, chunnalu, ni, kake, kudada.
Don't obey whatever others say.
Adhal, enna, alam, urukarade?
And what is the year?
Adu, parishutthamana, da?
Is it holy?
Adu, viswasa jeevidukke, eettada?
Is it apt for faith life?
Adu, kattarukke, eettada?
Is it apt to God?
Aviyana, oru, otukoldrar, ra?
Is it right in the spirit?
Idha, ni, first, analyze, panano?
First analysis.
Azda, rema, mukkiamanu?
That is very important.
Irenthavudhe, avargad, vastarangalai, kalathivuduvar.
Secondly, they will strip him.
Oru, manidhan, needinaal, devan, taripikirar.
A man is clothed with righteousness.
Oliyay, avanukku, vastaramanga, taripikirar.
Gave light as his righteousness.
Avanay, avanukku, alagana, vastarangal, neelli, vastarangal, ellavudhal, parishutthavangal, needigalial, avralai, mudisutthukarar.
God crowns him with beautiful garments and righteousness of saying.
Kattar, thudhi, udai, avanukku, kodukkarar.
Gives him the garment of praise.
Ananal, narakarade, enna?
But what happens?
Indha ketapochevakal, matruvukkadi, vastaraththai, kalathivuduvar.
Evil soldiers will strip others.
Avanay, viswasa tehkeduttharade.
Strip their faith.
Parishutthaththakedutthuvadu.
Strip their holiness.
Prathiste, nasthamaki, vuduvadu.
Strip their consequence.
Matruvukkadi, jeeviyaththetugav, vedanipaduthu, da, ivanukdi, modal, uliyam.
Buffeting the others is their first ministry.
Matruvudhu, sivapangiyay, uduthuvadu.
And scarlet robe on others.
Matruvukka, meela, ketta, payrgalai, uduthivuduvadu.
And crowning others with bad names.
Eva, epdipattale?
He is such a person.
Eva, epdipattale?
She is such a person.
Indha pillai, epdipattale?
Girl is such a person.
Indha, al, epdipattavan?
This man is such a one.
Epdip, sivapangiyay, uduthukar, oru, character, onakirukkarada?
Do you have the nature of clothing others with scarlet robe?
Aduthu, matruvukkali, mulmudi, sudduvadu?
Next, crowning others with thorns.
Adina, enna, artha?
What is it?
Mental torture, koduvar.
And mental torture.
Avan, nimmariyar, urukavadra, dela?
You don't make others respectful.
Torte, koduthukite, urukkar.
Keep on torturing them.
Adha mulmudi, suddappattu, Yesu, yavlu, vedanapadurvar.
How much Jesus would have paid with the thorns?
Andha, vesham, mulugalai, vayitha, addichanga.
They bit him with a poisonous thorn.
Adu, pola, onnimitha, matruvukkali, manavedanai, patthal, adu, kutcham.
If others are in mental torture because of you, then that is a fault.
Nyayadibadigal, in, pustakathin, nam, parkumbuludhe.
Turning to judges.
Iindham Adhikarathe, chapter five. Porkalathu, munaila, ninndharavukkali, solappadurukkararkai.
It is said about the people in the high places of the field.
Ananal, pirivani, undakkinavukkali, solappadurukkararkai.
But there are people who cause divisions.
Nyayadibadigal, Iindhu, padinayindhu, kadaisile, parkumbuludhe.
Five fifteen, the last portion.
Ruben, in, pirivani, laal, undana, irudayathin, nenivukal, midhi.
For the divisions of Reuben, where great were the thoughts of hearts.
Ruben, in, pirivani, laal, manav, issarangal, midhi.
And the thoughts of heart because of Reubenism, how much?
Ivangal, yuttakalathuk, varamattanga.
They won't come to the battlefield.
Mental torture, koduthukite, urpa.
Keep on giving the mental torture.
Ah, apditaan, Bible, solukarade.
That's what the word of God says.
Inno, adakurithin, inno, adhal, inno, oru, biryya, kootamay, urukarade.
There is another big group about it.
Ruben, udiyay, type, type, epdina?
The Reuben's type.
Avu, vittley, arpa, mandigal, mathila, arpa, nathavara, paadukal, vellakal, uliyangal, hmm, varavay, maata.
He will be among the sheepfolds but doesn't come for suffering.
Priyam, aralay, ningal, ettanivere, mulmudi, suddi, urupirak?
Beloved, how many have you counted with thorns?
Ni, mulmudi, suddukar, uliyan, nalha?
You should, you are not a minister crowning others with thorns.
Adutha, avan, kayilai, oru, kool, koduthanga.
Nextly, they stripped him.
Maladu, kayilai, oru, koolai, koduthu.
They gave him the reed.
Pariyasampannanga.
They mocked him.
Anam, mulangal, poohuva?
But they will bow.
Bible, ninga, padichu, paranga.
You read that.
Avan, avargal, mulangal, padittu.
They bowed the knee.
Anam, avanga, pariyasampaninarkai.
But they mocked.
Ni, indha, vandha, mulangal, pothu, edhukaaga, mulangal, pothuvar?
Why are you bowing down your knee here?
Matruvukka, pariyasampanthukka?
It's to mock others.
Matruvukkali, pariy, kelviketukarukka?
Is it a question of those?
Ni, yooschi, paranga. Avargal, ellar, mulangal, pothanga, anam, Yesu, vay, pariyasampaninarkai.
They bowed the knee but mocked Jesus.
Siluvaila, thongi, thukuda, andha, siluvakal, avattha, kelviketukarana, avar, pariyasampanidu.
Even the thief on the cross was mocking Jesus.
Ni, devan, dekumarana?
Are you the son of God?
Apa, on, niyum, erangir, engli, erakirin, sanan?
Then he said, "You saved Joseph and me."
Andha, pariyasathin, avi, siluvaila, kodu, avan, vedukku, poohala.
Spirit of mockery did not go on the cross.
Arumiyana, ni, oru, nalapochevakala, irundhal, idu, ungalukdi, vaalkai, irukkada.
If you're God's good soldiers, you will not have mockery.
Ni, indha markathil, vandha, mulangal, pothu, paragai, pariyasathin, avi, onakul, irukkakudada.
After bowing down your knee, don't have the spirit of mocking.
Adutha, avar, kari, thuppinarkai.
They spat upon his face.
Yavlu, biryya, oru, koduramana, oru, pathai.
What a terrible path.
Yesaya, thirka, tharshnam, idakurithu, thirka, tharshnam, aha, pesukarade.
I see how the prophet says about it.
Apdithu, thuppum, buludhe?
When they spat.
Avar, epdii, irundhar?
How was he?
Mugathai, karparay, pola, vichikutthara?
Harder than a flint.
Ah, yesaya, Iindhu, Iindha, ar?
I see a fifty six.
Adikiravakalukku, en, mudukayum, thaday, meyray, pidiguravakalukku, en, thadigalayum, oppukoduthen, avamana, thukku, umil, neerukku, en, mugathai, marekavillai, ka.
I gave my back to the smites and my cheeks to them, that plug of the hair, I hid not my face from shame and spitting.
Adutha, vasan, chulukarude, en, mugathai, na, epdii, vichikuttha? Karparay, pola, vichikuttha?
The next verse is, "I gave my face as a flint."
Ipputi, yaradu, omu, thal, thuppi, kanga?
Have anyone spat on your face?
Paas, daan, avargal, israela, pothurukumbuludhe?
When pastor Dawn went to Israel.
Oru, yudanukaaga, Yesu, pathi, chonna, oru, yudanukku, suvi, shesin, chonna?
He published gospel to the Jews.
Konjan, nara, kattukat, irunana?
He heard for some time.
Tidin, oru, Yesu, pathi, konja, alama, peesnada?
Suddenly, he spoke in death about Jesus.
Indha, Yesu, da, rachagar, ninga, avar, siluvaila, aranjittingan?
This Jesus is the Savior, you crucified him.
Avan, nara, nalal, arundha, patna, apdii, kari, mungil, thuppi, tha?
He suddenly spat upon his face.
Ehova, oru, var?
He's a Jehovah's one.
Yar, pathi, Yesu, pathi, Yesu, vandha, rachagar, nam, siluvaila, aranjitthun.
And you say, "Jesus is the Savior and we have crucified him."
Mugathal, apdii, kari, thuppidan?
He spat on his face.
Apa, avar, enna, sanan?
You know what pastor Dawn said?
Onudiyay, marko, thuppa, sollude, ya, marko, thupparadu, vanga, sollude?
Your religion says spit, but my religion says endure.
Idha, on, markathukka, ya, markathu, ula, difference?
This is the difference between yours and mine.
Onudiyay, marko, epdii, matavana, kari, thuppa, sollude?
Your religion says to spit others.
Anam, Yesu, naan, aradikara, Yesu, indha, thuppu, allan, ni, vangi, kyan, nisoli, solitarar?
Jesus, whom my worship says, forgive them.
Apdri, yana, yanda, markam, karakta, yar, devam, ambrin, katar?
Which religion is correct? Who is God?
Am, apdii, ninndut, sorry, chottan?
He was turned to say, "Sorry."
Ah, manichiganga.
Sorry.
Ava, sarapattan?
I was hasty.
Ni, yarudiyay, porchevakar?
Who soldier are you?
Ni, ettanivere, kari, thuppi, urup, ni, mugathal, thuppa, maata, avan, cross, vandhabu, vayanunne, apannam, onak, chali, varu?
You would have spat on many others, when they cross you, you spit afterwards.
Apannay, avanukku, apdhi, chali, vandhu, thondele, poradu, pisa, sumari?
After that, it is during that time, they feel their throat is spun.
Ah, idellan, thavaru, priyam, adav?
But this is all wrong.
Idellan, avargal, in, enkaavu, orunal, idukkala, ninga, vandhu, reverse, padil, kodukkan?
One day or the other, you will be fenced of this.
Ningi, yooschi, paranga.
Think of this.
Ni, desaadi, budhin, porchevaganan, Yesu, vay, nalapochevaganan?
Are you the soldier of the governor or the good soldier of Jesus?
Yesu, vay, siluvaila, aray, avagala, kondugonarkai.
They took Jesus to be crucified.
Oru, vandha? Oru, vandha?
Just one kill.
Yesu, vay, kanna, moodytha?
And he closed the eyes of Jesus.
Indha, school, pasangapadichu, var?
And the school children would do that.
Tidin, oru, vandha, kanna, mothikwa, ellar, ninshivan, tapat, 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 thalla, koduva, yar, na, kodun, soludun, soluva?
Suddenly, one person will make him close the eyes and all will hit him and say, "Who did this?"
Idi, Yesu, siluvaki, pothurukkum, unnaala, nanandha, oru, sambavan, nam, follow, pandra?
This is a thing that happened before crucifixion of Jesus.
Yesu, thidin, oru, vandha, kanna, pothi, oru, vandha, kanna, aranja, oru, vandha, erel, erja, thallila, kodna, kodithu, chodanga, eni, biryat, thukkut, thrisi, thana? Yar, ipon, thallila, kodna, nisoli, apdri?
One person closed the eyes of Jesus, other person smote him and said, "Who smote you?"
Idu, oru, charist, spirit?
This is a spirit of sadness.
Matruvukka, paduthi, adhula, sandosham, bakar?
Grieving others and rejoicing in it.
Chala, ulagathla, ninga, padikin, andha, thand, cigarette, vichu, sudu, vay, bange?
In the world, you can see people smoking the cigar.
Illavudhe, sariyana, addi, addi, bange?
But they will beat him nicely.
Rattam, vandhittha, paragana, ivan, avi, poohu?
When the blood comes, the spirit will go.
Ivangal, alla, manidharakal, alla, miruk, paravikar?
They are not human beings, they are beasts.
Idu, oru, spirit, nan, cholrar?
This is a spirit.
Ah, ipputi, bhat, avi, allan, irukkarada, Bible, solukar?
Bible says, "There are spirits like that."
Oru, thallila, kodna, oru, vandha, mugathal, aranja?
Once smote, once spat.
Yes, andarathla, vandha, chonnara, na, edhavu, tapusinjindha, anta, sol, ya, addi, karan?
Jesus said, "If I have done any wrong, tell me why do you smile?"
Priyam, aanulai, namudiyay, vaalkai, nam, yarudiyay, porchevakarkai?
Beloved, who soldier saw we?
Kattar, vandha, nichima, kanakka, var?
God will surely ask a God.
Ni, indha, desathle, viswasa, thukke, ni, veeranaga, nikkar?
Stand as a faith warrior for the slants.
Chuma, oniy, sogamak, indha, sabaila, kondundhu, appudhi, direct, parlathuk, poruduk, kala?
God healed and brought you to the church not to take directly to heaven.
Onakaga, rattam, sindhurukkadi, ni, indha, markathil, jeevan, kodukumbadiyaga?
He shed his blood for you that you may give your life for him.
Yovan, padinetta, Adhikarathe, nam, parkumbuludhe?
John eighteen.
Padimura, muna, vasanath, parkumbuludhe?
Verse three.
Yudas, oru, gatsamane, vara, oru, koottam, poikundhe, irundha?
And there were one group going to get some man with Judas.
Ivangal, udiyay, nokkam, enna?
What is their intention?
Yesu, vay, thuppi, padu?
To take hold of Jesus.
Ivargal, gatsamane, ponnadu, ja, bijka, alla?
They went to get some money not to pray.
Na, yarkanavay, sone?
I already told.
Avagala, mulangal, pothu, thuj, bijka, alla, Yesu, vay, pariyasampanna?
They need not to pray but to mock Jesus.
Yovan, padinittu, muri, le, solappadurukarade?
In John eighteen three.
Ange, Yudas, porchevakar, in, koottathu, ponnan?
Children, when with the soldiers.
Avan, ja, bijka, pohvay, la?
Not to pray.
Avargal, vandavakal, ja, bijka, pohvay, la?
They did not come to pray.
Yesu, vay, thuppi, kapponavarkai?
But to take hold of Jesus.
Arumiyana, sagodhre, sagodhreye, indha, markathai, ni, gatsamane, aha, bindadukaraya, illavudhal, Yesu, vay, thuppi, kudiyavu, java, jabaviranai, bindadukaraya, matruvukkali, thuppi, kudiyavu, edamai, matukaraya?
Beloved brother, sister, are you making gets a money a place to catch others or to pray?
Ningi, ukandhur, na, enna, pesaran, ne, ya, vaartaya, catch, pandrak, ni, ukandhurukala?
You may sit here to catch my words.
Ah, enad, pressangathal, edhavu, oru, point, apdikathuk, ukandhurukala?
You may cast, try to catch one of my words.
Apdri, oru, thinaal, avan, apdichurun, chali?
To somehow catch him by his word.
Ipputi, tham, oru, sell, allan, avangad, vandhu, peechi, kodupanga?
Some would tell like that.
Thaknu, avangal, andha, idil, sikka, vichit, vadi, poiduva?
They will make you to be entangled and go up.
Ivargal, gatsamane, varuvadu, illavudha, deva, samuva, varuvadu, ivargal, mulangal, padivudhu, parisha, pariyasampanna, ivargal, gatsamane, varugaradu, Yesu, vay, thuppi, kya? They came to get some money not to pray but to mock Jesus
Then they allow the soldiers of Jesus
You need to understand the truth John 9 One group of soldiers What did they do?
They broke the bones of the two people What a pathetic state
Already hanging on the cross But what did they do? They broke the bones of the election If you are a good soldier, you will not break the doctrine
Don't break doctrines Don't break the life after the truth And leave a life after the doctrine
You need not leave a life as you like with the Bible
We are under so much conditions and discipline to leave
Some patients cannot be admitted in all hospitals
Because they have been already subscribers in the hospitals At one time, they will say, "You go somewhere else"
Why? They don't know by the advice of all doctors
They cannot follow the advice
They cannot be under the diet set by them John 19:34 One of the soldiers appears to sigh What a treacherous city But Jesus Christ is there
Jesus healed him by the blood that came there
Acts 27:47 42, they counsel to slave Paul
Who are you? Are you called to kill the people of God or called to kill others? You are come out to die for God, don't make others to die
But endure hardness as a good soldier for Jesus Christ
God doesn't say endure the world
Preacher says, "If you have a wife, then enjoy your life without youth"
I have power to enjoy everything But nothing is expedient for me That is the philosophy of newness when time
After coming into this world
After attaining salvation You should not endure goodness but evil
You can see military people in the north side, you can see military people in the cold regions
Ordinary people cannot stay there They are in such a terrible place You may think they are given good salary therefore they stay there, one day you try to They just go and stand there as though they are born to die Not to die in the battle but in the cold Death is always near them They are so much for the lands In this faith life, death is nigh us But you have to be a good soldier See how he endures hardness for the lands No comforts Wife and children are somewhere And she will be dying there But see the pathetic state One brother was saved And he came out that he might live a good life Put on the leaf and then resign And it is that time, Cargill War started They did not give the leaf He was a person standing in the signal Therefore, they said, "You cannot give him"
He thought of going aside, but they said, "Right in the night, you have to stand in the front"
They were given eight assistants and he was asked to go And they did not stay, sending by the car He was given a map Just that If he puts on the torch, then they will bomb him
That very night, he crawled up and finally the trip prevailed
He said, "Lord, if you take me back alive, I'll leave for you" Now he is a believer He endured hardness This is for the world And just they gave an award and leave them But in the heaven, not like that
This faith trial
It will become eternal weight of glory You who endure sufferings for little You who suffer for a little time You will receive an eternal weight of glory Therefore, after coming to the fire Don't think you will receive comforts He may give
There is a slogan about CPM
And in the beginning, he did not give and try But now, he gives and tries Then you cannot say rupees ten And never rupees thousands You cannot say lakhs That was like that No good food Little rice in that porridge is a lucky thing That's how many God, many did not get At one place when I was I was then in Andhra I had an interpreter A good believer of that time And he would speak in Telugu I was speaking to the demon possessed sister This brother stood with me And he said, "He is saying go" Soon, the demon looked at me Demon possessed girl gave a glance of look You have no right to speak, close your mouth I did not understand He, she has tripped the matter
You have left the ministry because you did not have rice, now you are asking me to go, only then I understood about him And only then, all you are
About the believer that he had returned from the ministry
After a second, he saw his face and said,
You may have sickness.
வேதனே சகிக்கணோ?
Endure the pain.
யாதி எதிர்க்கணோ?
Resist the sickness.
செய்கினோ?
Previse.
விடுதலைப் பற்ற வாய்ப்பு உண்டு.
And you have the opportunity for deliverance.
ஒரு பெய்ன்கிலர் பொட்டா உனக்கு விடுதலை கிடச்சுரோ.
With the pain killer, you may get the deliverance.
மேன்மியான உயிர்த்தரதலை அடையும்படி அவர்கள் வாதிக்கப்பட ஒப்புக்குட்டார்கள். விடுதலைப் பற்ற சம்மதிக்கவில்லை.
But they did not accept to be delivered but for a better resurrection.
அதுதான் இந்த மார்கத்தினுடைய ஏம்.
That is the aim of this sermon.
மேன்மியான உயிர்த்தரதல்.
Better resurrection.
அப்படின்னா என்ன அர்த்தம்?
What is that?
மேன்மியான உயிர்த்தரதல் என்ன? தால்மியான ஒரு உயிர்த்தரதல் இருக்கு. ஆர்டினரி உயிர்த்தரதலும் இருக்கு. கடையீசி உயிர்த்தரதலும் இருக்கு.
Better resurrection means there is a final last resurrection and an inferior resurrection.
ஆனா பைபில் என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
But what does the Bible say?
முதலாம் உயிர்த்தரதலுக்குப் பங்குள்ளவன் பரிசுத்தவானும், பாக்கியவானுமாயிருக்கிறார்.
Blessed and holy is he that hath part in the first resurrection.
அதுக்கு போறவானே மரண சாசனா அவனுக்கு எல்வி வச்சிருக்கு. ஜீவு உயிர் போவோ. அதுக்குதான் அவர்களா உள்ளே.
And he just comes out to give, give whose life.
இன்னைக்கெத்தனவே நீங்கள் நல்ல போர்ச்செவர்லா இருக்கிறீர்.
How many of your good soldiers did it?
கத்தைய பரிசுத்த நாமத்துக்கு மைமுண்டாவுங்க.
Glory be to God's soul in him.
இப்பொழுது நம் லுக்காயில் நின்ன சுவிசேஷம் மூனாமதிகாரத்துக்கு நம்மடைய கவனத்தைத் திருப்போம்.
Now let us turn to Luke the Gospel, Chapter 3.
லுக்கா மூன்று பதினான்கே.
Luke 3:14.
போற்சேவகரும் அவனை நோக்கி, நாங்கள் என்ன செய்வேன்டுமென்று கேட்டார்கள். அதற்கு அவன் நீங்கள் ஒருவருக்கும் இடுக்கன் செய்யாமலும், பொய்யாய் குற்றம் சாட்டாமலும், உங்கள் சம்பளமே போதுமென்று மிருந்தலின்றான்.
And the soldiers likewise demanded of him saying, and what shall we do? And he said unto them, Do violence to no man, neither accuse any falsely, and be content with your wages.
இந்த உலகத்தில் உனக்கு வருகிற தீமைக்கெல்லாம் பிரதிபலன் உண்டு.
You have the reward for all the evil you endure.
எவ்வளவு தீமையானுவிக்கிறீயோ, அப்பளவு பர்லவுதல் மைமை உண்டு.
How much evil you endure, so much glory in heaven.
யோவான் சானகன் பிரசங்கம் நிகொண்டு வந்தான்.
John the Baptist was preaching.
அவன்டை அருமியான பிரசங்கத்தைப் பலருங்கேட்டார்கள்.
Beautiful sermon, so many hearts.
அப்பா அதில் ஒரு கூட்டம் இருந்தது.
One group was there.
அவன்டை பிரசங்கத்தைக் கேக்கறதுக்கு போற்செவவரும் வந்திட்டான்.
Soldiers also came.
அப்பொழுது அவன் வந்து கேக்கறாங்க, நாங்க என்ன செய்யணும்?
They asked, what shall we do?
ஒரு நல்ல போற்செவவன் என்ன செய்நும்கிறதுக்கு பாய்ந்து சொல்றேன். ஒரு நாலு பாய்ந்து சொல்றேன்.
And I give you four points for a good soldier.
நா இதுவரைக்கு சொன்னது தீய போற்செவவனுடைய வாழ்க்கை.
Neither do I talk about the evil soldier.
ஆனா ஒரு நல்ல போற்செவவன் எப்படி இருக்கணும்கிறதுக்கு நாலு பாய்ந்து சொல்றேன்.
Now just four points for a good soldier.
நீங்கள் ஒரு நல்ல போற்செவவனான்னா, கத்தருக்காகத் திங்கானுவிக்குமுடிய. அக்திரிண்டு இருக்கப்பட்டவர்கள்.
You were called and chosen to end your heartness as a good soldier.
கத்தர்தான் உன்னை கொண்டு வந்தாரு.
God has brought to you.
அவர்தான் உன்னை முத்தரைபோட்டு இருக்கிறார்.
He has sealed you.
எப்படி? அவர் சேனாபதியானால், நீ அவருடைய போற்செவகர் என்று நீ புரிந்து கொள்ள வேண்டும்.
He being the captain, understand you are a soldier.
இப்பொழுது போற்செவகர் வந்து யோவான் சானகனுடைய கேக்கறாங்க.
Soldiers ask John about this.
அய்யா நாங்க என்ன செய்யணும்?
What shall we do?
அவங்க உலகத்தின் போற்செவகர்கள்தான்.
They were soldiers of this world.
இப்பொழுது நாங்க கத்தருடைய போற்செவலா மாறணும்னா, நாங்க என்ன செய்யணும்?
But to become soldiers of God, what should we do?
அலாகா மூனு காரியத்தான் அவன் மலியுற்றுத்துகிறான்.
Three beautiful points he says.
ஒன்று இடுக்கன் செய்யாதே.
Do violence to no man.
எண்டாவது பொய்யாய் குற்றம் சாட்டாதே.
Neither accuse anyone falsely.
முன்றாவது உங்கள் சம்பளமே போதுமென்று நீங்கள் அதிலே இருங்கை.
Be content with your wages.
இதுதான் ஒரு நல்ல போற்செவவனுடைய தகுதிகள் என்று யோவான் சானகன் பிரசங்கம் மண்டிரா.
John the Baptist says about the qualification of a good soldier.
யோவான் சானகன் ரெம்பர் டாப்பான பிரசங்கி.
John the Baptist was a hard preacher.
அவனுக்கு வந்து இந்த பிரியமானவர்களே, அன்பானவர்களே, ஆருமியான தேவுன்டே ஜனமே இப்படிலாம் பிரசங்கம் நடத்திரியாதே.
He doesn't preach saying beloved or dearly once.
நீங்க அப்படின்னு எதிர்பாதிரித் உக்காந்து இருக்க கூடாதே.
You should not expect like that.
நாகமான் வந்து சொன்னா, அவர் என்னைத் தொடுவார், தளுவார், தடவிப் பார்ப்பார், எனை சுகமாக்குவார்மை சொன்னா.
Name and came and said, He will come, he will touch me, and finally heal me.
எய்யற்கனவே ஒரு குஸ்டரோகி.
Already a lipper.
ஆனா எக்ஸ்பெக்டேஷன் எப்படி இருக்கே?
But look at his expectation.
இவரை வந்து திருக்கதரிசி தொட்டு தடவி சுகமாக்கிவிடணுமா?
This prophet should come and touch and heal him.
அங்கு உங்க வீட்டில் உள்ளவங்களே உன்னைத் தொடாமத்தன தொற்றிட்டுட்டுருக்கிறார்.
His people at home itself are not touching him.
ஆனா இங்கே என்ன சொல்லப்பட்டு இருக்கிறது?
But here.
யோவான் சானகன் டைப் பிரசங்கள் ரெம்பர் டாப்பா இருக்கோ.
John the Baptist sermon was tough.
பனத்தைப் பாக்கமாட்டா, பனத்தைப் பாக்கமாட்டா.
He will not look at money.
ஸ்தானம், ஸ்தானம், மானலாம் பாக்கமாட்டா.
He will not look at position.
ஆள பாக்கமாட்டா.
He will not look at people.
முக்ஸ்துதி பண்ணமாட்டா.
He will not praise men.
அப்படிப்பட்ட டைப் பே அவனுக்குக் கிடையாதே.
He is not such a type.
அவன் பிரசங்க என்னவுண்டா தெரியுமா?
His people.
விச்வாசிகளே, அப்படியா பேசுந்தாரு.
What did he preach? Is it believers?
எப்படி பிரசங்கா?
How did he preach?
விரியன் பம்பு குட்டிகளே, அப்படின்னா.
He wiped first.
அவங்களைக் கொண்டா.
He smiled and killed them.
அவன்டை பிரசங்கா, யோர்தான் நதில் ஸ்டேஜ் போடாமலே பிரசங்கமண்ணா.
He spoke as the John the Baptist.
யோர்தான் கரைலே ஸ்டேஜ் போடாமலே பிரசங்கமண்ணா.
Without stage in the rivers of Jordan, he preached.
ஜனங்கள் லாம் வேகமாவா வந்து கூடினின்னாங்க.
People crowded.
அவன் அட்டிச் சிஸ்டார்ட் பண்ண உடனே ஜனங்கள் கேக்கறமார் இருந்துச்சே. திடீனு பாத்தா சொல்டா, விரியன் பம்பு குட்டிகளே.
He started and the people were interested, then he said.
கதப்பித்துக்கொள்ள உங்களுக்கு வகைகாட்டினவன் யார்?
Who showed you way to escape the wrath to God.
நான் சானலாம் குடுக்கும்படியாதே.
They could not remain.
போய்டுவான் சொல்டா.
They said, we'll go.
யே?
Why?
மனந்திரும்புதலுக்கேற்ற கனிகளைக் குடுங்கை.
You bring forth fruits and repentance.
அதுக்கு பிறகு நான் சானத்தைப் பத்தி பேசலா.
Then you can speak on about baptism.
பைபிலை சூக்குனேன்னா, பைபிலைப்படி வாள்டுறதுக்கு கொஞ்சமாது உன்னை ஒப்புக்குடு.
If you want to take the Bible, yield to leave accordingly.
நீ மறுபடி பின்னால போகாதே.
Don't go behind.
நீ பின்மாட்டக்காரனா போய்டாதே.
Don't become a backslider.
உன்ன முடிலனே நான் சானை எடுக்காதே.
Don't take water back.
நானேகருக்கு சொல்லி இருக்கறேன்.
I have told many.
அவருச்சல் சகோதரிகளுடைய சொல்லி இருக்கேன்.
Told to many sisters.
அவசரப்படாதே. அவன் புருஷனைக்கு நான் சானங்குடுக்கணும்னா அவசரப்படாதே.
Don't be hasty to give baptism to your husband.
உனக்காசருக்கு புருஷன் நான் சானை எடுத்துக்காத் திருந்திருவான். அப்படி கிடையாதே.
You think because of your husband's baptism you turn.
ஒருச்சல் லாம் சந்தை பயங்களுக்கு கால் கட்டுபோட்டுட்டா, பயன் திருந்திருவான்னு. நீ கால் கட்டுபோட்றா, அவளுக்கு கல்துலலா போட்டு கல்து கட்டுபோட்றா?
And even if you lock their feet, you cannot turn there.
உன்ன பயனுக்கு கால் கட்டுபோட்றா, ஆனா வந்து மாற்றவளுக்கு கல்துல கட்ட கைரகட்டி இள்ளத்தினை என்ன வருதே?
And you put lock to the feet of your son, but if they are going to fill the rope, what will happen?
அதே போலதான் நான் சானமு.
And that is what baptism.
மனந்திரும்பாவம் நான் சானங்குடுத்து நானே குடுத்துருக்கிறேன், நானே கேவலப்பட்டுருக்கிறான்.
I have given many baptisms without repentance, put to shame also.
நம்ம என்ன செய்றோம்? இதிலதான் நம்ம பைத்துக்கொண்டுருவோ. அது குடுத்துட்டா சரியாயிடுவா. அது எப்படி சரியாயிடுவா?
We think.
ஒன்புனிசல் ரசிப்பாயோ, ரசிக்கமாட்டாயோ என்பதை நீ எப்படி அறிவாயின்னு பௌல் கேட்கறாரு?
Saint Paul says, how can he know whether you can save your husband or not?
மனந்திரும்புதலுக்கேற்ற கனி குடுக்கலென்னா, யோவான் சானகன் நான் சானங்குடுக்கமாட்டான்.
John the Baptist does not keep baptism if you don't give the fruit of repentance.
இப்பொழுது அவன் சொன்றான் போற்செவகனா, நீ இடுக்கன் செய்யாதே.
You are a soldier, do no violence.
இடுக்கன்னா என்ன அர்த்தம்?
What is violence?
மற்றவனுக்கு டிஸ்டர்ப் பண்ணாதே.
Disturbing others.
அவனுக்குத் திரோகம் பண்ணாதே.
Don't be treacherous.
இடுக்கன் பத்தி பைபில் என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
What does Bible say about violence?
சப்பனியா மூனாமதிகாரம் முதல் இரண்டு வசனங்கை.
Zechariah 3:1-2.
இடுக்கன் செய்து ஊத்தையும் அழுக்குமாயிருக்கிற நகரத்துக்கு ஐயோ, அது சத்தத்துக்கு செவிக்கொடுக்கவில்லை. அது கடிந்து கொள்ளதலே ஏற்சுகொள்ளவில்லை. அது கற்றரை நம்பவில்லை. அது தன் தேவினடத்தில் சேரவில்லை.
Zechariah 3:1-2.
இடுக்கன் செய்து ஊத்தையும் அழுக்குமாயிருக்கிற நகரத்துக்கு ஐயோ என்று அந்த வேதம் சொல்லுகிறது.
Vot to her, that is filthy and polluted to the oppressing city.
இடுக்கன் எப்பொழுது மற்றவங்களுக்கு நீ டிஸ்டர்ப் பண்றியோ, எப்போ திரோகம் பண்றியோ, எப்போ தொல்ல குடுக்கிறேயோ, அப்போ நீ ஊத்தையா அழுக்குமா மாறிருந்து பைபில் சொல்லுகிறது.
The time when you oppress others, you become filthy and polluted.
அதுக்கு பிறகு உனக்கு சத்தத்துக்கு செவிக்குடுக்குமுடியாதே.
After that, you cannot hear the words.
உனை யாராவது கடிந்து கொண்டா, உன்னால அது ஏற்றுக்கொள்ள முடியாதே.
You cannot accept the rebuking of others.
நீ கத்தர் நம்பமாட்டே.
You will not believe.
நீ தேவுன்டத்தில் சேர்ந்து வரமாட்டே.
You will not come closer to God.
இதுதான் இடுக்கனுடைய இயப்பத்தே.
That's the effort of violence.
நீ இடுக்கன் செய்ய ஆரம்பிச்சிதேனால், நீ ஊத்தையா மாறிட்டேன் அர்த்தம்.
Once you do violence, you become filthy.
ஒரு நாற்றம் பிடித்த ஒரு ஆளா மாறிட்டேன் அர்த்தம்.
You become a polluted fellow.
பைபில் அப்படிதான் சொல்லுகிறது.
That's the words of the Bible.
அந்த இடுக்கன் செய்தவனை எப்படி கண்டுபிடிக்கலா?
How can you find that person?
தேவுன்டே சத்தத்துக்கு செவிக்குடுக்கமாட்டா.
They will not talk into the voice of God.
அவனைப் போன்னு நீங்க கொஞ்சம் கடிஞ்சுக்கொண்டு, நீ அப்படில்லை, இப்படில்லை, நீ சரியா இருக்கணும், இப்படி செஞ்சுது தப்புன் சொல்லுங்க, கடிசிருவான், தப்புன் சிரிதுவா.
They cannot receive correction, they will only turn to bite you.
கடிந்து கொள்ளதலை அவன் ஏற்றுக்கொள்ளமாட்டா.
They cannot receive correction.
அடுத்து அவன் வந்து தேவுன்டத்தில் சேர்ந்து வரவே மாட்டா.
They will never draw closer to God.
அனப்படிலாதான் பௌல் சொல்லு, யோவான் சானகன் சொன்றாரு, போற்செவகனா, நீ இடுக்கன் செய்யாதே.
There's a verse in, he says, if you are a soldier, do no violence.
நீ யாரையும் டிஸ்டர்ப் பண்ணாதே, யாரையும் அசிங்கபடுத்திராதே, கேவலப்படுத்தாதே.
Don't disturb others, don't oppress others.
நீ இடுக்கன் செய்தால்.
If you do violence.
கத்தர் உன்னை நொருக்குவார்னு பைபில் சொல்லுகிறது.
The Lord will break you.
72:4.
Psalm 72.
72:4.
Psalm 72:4.
ஜனத்தில் சிருமைபடுகிறவர்களை அவர் ஞாயம் ஹிசாரித்து, ஏலையின் பிள்ளிகளை ரசித்து, இடுக்கன் செய்கிறவனை நொருக்குவார்.
இடுக்கன் செய்யுறது ஆவா.
He shall judge the poor of the people, he shall save the children of the needy, and shall break in pieces the oppressed.
மற்றவங்களுக்கு நம்ம வந்து பிரச்சனை பண்ணவே கூடா.
Never cause problems for others.
முனின்ன அளவு நீங்க எளைபார்த்தலையைக் குடுத்துப் பலாயு.
Should they extend give others rest?
நான் சொல்றேன், எளைபார்த்தலைக்குடுக்கணும், நீ இருந்ததான் குடுப்பீங்க.
Only if you have, you can give others.
பாத்தரத்திலிருந்தான், பானைலிருந்தான் எங்க வரும், அகப்பைல வரும், பொஷ்பூல் வரும்.
Only if you haven't in the pot, it will come in the spoon.
நீங்கள் எத்தனவே இப்படி இருக்கிறீங்க?
How many of you are like this?
இடுக்கன் செய்யாதீங்க.
Don't oppress.
பிரபு புதினனாயிருந்தால், அவன் செய்யற இடுக்கண்கள் மிகதி என்று நீதிமுளிகள் 28:14 சொல்லுகிறது.
If the prince is foolish, his oppression is much says Proverbs 28:16.
பிரபு புதினனாயிருந்தால், அவன் செய்யும் இடுக்கன் மிகதியாயிருக்கிறது.
And it is said, if a prince is foolish, his oppression is much.
நீ ஒரு புதினனாகிறது கூடாதே.
You don't be foolish.
அப்படின்னா என்ன அர்த்தம்? இடுக்கன் செய்கிறவன் ஒரு புதினன் என்று வேதம் சுட்டி காட்டுகிறது.
Oppressor is foolish, says the word of God.
நீங்க தாவிதைப் பத்தி பார்க்கும்படுது.
Looking about David.
அவன் மகாபுதினமா, புதிமானாக நடந்து கொண்டான்னு பைபில் சொல்லுது.
The Bible says he walked exceeding wise.
ஆனா ஒரு இடத்துல சொல்றா.
But at one point.
அவன் மகாபுதினமானாக நடந்து கொண்டான்னு பைபில் சொல்லுகிறது.
He says, he walked exceeding foolish.
எப்படி இருக்குன்னு நீங்க யோசிப்பாருங்க.
Just look at it.
ஒரு பகுதில் அவனுடைய வாழ்க்கை என்ன சொல்லுகிறது?
On one part his life.
அவன் மகாபுதிமானான் நடந்து வந்தான்.
He was exceeding foolish.
ரெம்பர் புதிமானான் நடந்துகிட்டா.
Exceeding wise.
1:18.
1:17.
4:14. தாவிது தன் செய்கீழில் எல்லாம் புதிமானாயின் நடந்தான்.
David was wise in all his ways.
இன்னொரு இடத்துல மகாபுதிமானான் நடந்தான்.
In another place, exceeding wise.
ஆனா அதே தாவிதைப் பத்தி இன்னொரு இடத்துல பைபில்ல படிக்கும்படுது.
About that same David in another place.
திருக்கதரிசி வந்து சொல்றா.
Prophet says.
நீ புதினமாயிசெய்தீய.
You have done foolish.
எப்படி இருக்கோ?
How it.
நம்மடைய வாழ்க்கை எப்படி இருக்குன்னு யோசிப்பாருங்க.
Just think how our life is.
பிரிமானலை இது ஒரு கடையீசி காலம்.
This is the last.
அவனே அறிகேட்டா.
He himself confessed.
மகாபுதினமா செஞ்சிட்டா ஸ்வாமி, மனிச்சிருங்க.
I have done very foolishly, for sake, forgive me, Lord. 2:10.
நான் மகாபுதினமாயிசெய்தேன்.
I have done very foolish.
பிரியமானவுளே, நீங்கள் புதினமாகிறதுங்கன்னா, மற்றவங்களுக்கு இடுக்கன் செய்துகிட்டே இருப்பீங்க, அதிகமா செய்வீங்க.
Beloved, if you are foolish, if you do violence, you do much.
தைவு செய்து இப்படிப்பட்ட வாழ்க்கை நம் நிறுத்தி வைக்கணும். ஏனந்தால் நாம் கிருஷ்ணுவுக்கு நல்ல போற்செவகனாய் அலைக்கப்பட்டவர்கள்.
Let us stop sit tonight, because we are chosen to be good soldiers.
இந்த மற்றவங்களுக்கு டிஸ்டர்ப் பண்ணி, பண்ணி, பண்ணி கடைசிலே, உன்னுடைய முடிவே எப்படி இருக்கோ? இடுக்கன் செய்தனுடைய முடிவே என்ன?
These people will disturb others and finally, what is the end of the oppressor?
ஒரு டைம் வரும்போது நீ பைத்தியக்காரனா மாறிடு.
At one time, you'll become insane.
பிரசங்கி ஏளாமதிகாரம்.
Ecclesiastes 7.
ஏளாமதிகாரத்தைப் பார்க்கும்படுது.
7:7.
இடுக்கன் ஆனது ஞானியையும் பைத்தியக்காரனாகும்.
ஆ, போ.
Surely oppression make a wise man mad.
இடுக்கன் ஆனது ஞானியையும் பைத்தியக்காரனாகும்.
Oppression make a wise man mad.
Try to accuse others.
If you separate the pressures of the wine, you shall be my mouth.
Just hold whatever you need in the sermon. God has a specific word for everyone.
Leaving that, don't give place for the spirit of accusation.
John eight ten. They must place before Jesus a woman caught in adult's. Jesus did not speak for long. Just one word. He that is without sin among you cast stones at her. Just wrote the word bending down. Turn back to so no man.
This crowd which was after this woman in adult tree and they finally ran away. She could not speak in anything.
Woman, where are those that accuse us? What was her reply? She could not speak in anything.
Woman, where are the accused us?
Are they gone without stoning you? What a beautiful question. We are not come here to accuse. We are come here to live without being accused.
Very easy to accuse others.
But that same fault will come in you. You will burn saying he is sleeping during the sermon, he will try to wake him up, finally he will sleep. Is it not like that?
One person will yawn and that spirit will spread fast.
That is true. What does the Bible say? Romans two. Romans one. Therefore, the inexcusable o man, who say ever the word the judges, preventing the judges another doubt condemns thyself. This is the words of Paul. What is the words of Jesus Matthew seven two? For with what judgment he judge, he shall be judge, and with what measure he makes, it shall be measured to you again. You cannot never turn back without the measure. Therefore, be very careful. Don't accuse your husband. Don't accuse your children. Don't accuse the families of others. You are not given the police word. You were chosen to be a good soldier to end your hardness for Christ. Who is he shall lay charts to God select. Romans eight thirty three. Who shall lay charts to God select. Don't be servants for the ministry of the devil for accusing others. There is four John the Baptist says, do no violence known accusing. Thirdly. Be content with your wages. You expect your wife to earn so much. Recently, I read the interview of a policeman. You also would have read. His son was married in Kerala, he spent hundred crores. How did you luckily become so rich? I am not a person who would get the lottery tickets for luck. But only I made efforts to progress. Therefore, labor to come back. And Deuteronomy eight says, God gives the strength to labor riches. As you God gives you a nourther. God gives you health. God gives you strength to become rich. That's what word of God says. Deuteronomy eight eighty. Therefore, what God gives is enough. Don't be the daughters of the lead saying, I need, give, give. Daughters of the lead, they are right. They never say enough. What will they say? Give, give, give and know the words. Just see how your life is. First Timothy six six says, godliness with contentment is a great game. And in the, they say, godliness that is contentment. And children of God should have content in mind. Do any one of you like? That's why be content with your wages. That's why be content with your wages. And you can earn and have your wages but never take bribes, never borrow from others. Maybe they are taking your wages. Genesis thirty one forty one Jacob's owner was laboring his uncle but he changed his ways ten times. He said your father changed my wages ten times. But still he accepted us. Beloved, what God gives is enough. He knows your name. If he plans to give you a house, you will do it. I went to a house last week. They were in rented house. They had a place, a land. They wanted to live. But had no money. Then a servant of God said. You want to gain and finally build, you cannot do it. Start with what you have and God will give. You know what they stated. I had, I had belief on God's word and I started like that and I finished the dedication, had two lacs to give offering. Just think. Try to live by faith. Exercise your faith. Faith without work is dead. As the dead calf is hit with stores, don't be having a dead faith. But the time to stand for the Lord is coming. Be content with your wages. Not only the wages of this world. He will give you wages in this part. A reward in heaven. What wages? If you preserve the souls. If you grow up souls. That is very important. Moses was born. Kept him in the ark of bulrushes in the water. But no rest. That mother had no rest. She was just stumbling. Didn't know what to do. Made an ark of bulrushes in the water. But don't know what will happen to the child. Will it cry? Will somebody kill it? Will it die in the water? Now she could not go out. Her bubbles yawn. But there is one person there. She is. Miriam. She was standing afar. How long the ark is going, where it is stucked up? What will happen to the child? He is not her younger brother. Right in that young age, her mind was running after the ball. That's why though God rebuked Miriam, we did not spare. Though he punished her, the Lord had mercy. Now she is taken. Pharos' daughter came there to take baths. Now the child is crying. What to do with this child? How to grow it up? A Christian came like that. And it is at that time Miriam came up. See what a beautiful word. Exodus two seven. See what a beautiful statement she gave. And she is the person who overthrew Pharaoh's daughter in a war. Know how to speak to souls. Know how to speak to husbands or wives or to owners or to the sons of God. No, how to speak to a new soul. Or maybe you know the business life. You may know business management. Man management. Very often Pastor Joel used to say you should know man management. You may know business management, hotel management, but know how to manage the souls. She beautifully said, may I bring the nurse to the child? She said bring. Who did she bring? Did she bring a nearby girl? Exactly the child's mother. Verse nine. If you grow up this child, I will give you wages. If you take up the souls in sin and captivity and grow it up for the Lord, you have wages. That is very important. Grow up your child, it's good. In Tamil there's. Feed the neighbor's child and your child will grow up by itself. If you feed another's child, your child will grow up by itself. How many souls do you feed? Grow up this child for me and I will give you wages. You and me have wages in heaven. How was it decided? With what is that incentive determined? What is the basic? How many souls did you grow up? How many did you give the wise word? To how many did you give the word and grow up in the doctrine, then I will give you wages. Prophetical books. What does word of God say? King shall be thy nursing fathers. And their queens, thy nursing mothers. Kings are no ordinary people. I see a forty nine twenty three. King shall be thy nursing fathers. Queens, thy nursing mothers. Very important. How many of us nurse others? Are you nursing our souls? Are you killing them? Are you doing infant killing? How many souls are built up hard in this doctrine by you? As many Moses you grow up so much wages you get. Moses means drawn out of the water. If one person knows Jesus through you, you have the wages. One person takes water baptism through you, you have the wages. I went to the house of a man who worked in Royal Enfield Company. When I went there. They have little awards kept in their house. All awards from their company. I asked what is it? Then he said. If you have some creative thinking, immediately they appreciate us. Because that is very important for the growth of the capital. What have you done for the growth of the church? We are not talking about offerings and thoughts. Don't go empty handed to whoever. And there should be a big team behind you. And king shall come to the brightness of thy rising. Farah's daughter said, grow up this child for me, I will give you wages. And if you want the car, God will give you. You want ten cars, God will give you. Nothing impossible with God. In one hand the vision had destined had such cars. But today we don't have sufficient place to place. God will give you wages if you grow the child. Finally. About a soldier. And when the angel which spoke unto Cornelius was departed, he called two of these household servants and divorced soldier of them that waited on him continually. Divorced soldier. I am studying about the good soldier. You should be a good soldier for Jesus. Who doesn't do violence and accuse others. A soldier who is content with wages. Whatever you give me is enough Lord. If you need, God will exactly bring you out. The next soldier pointed out. Divorced soldier in the household of Cornelius. What is devoutness? Many think clapping the hands is godliness. In feeling of the anointing. What is the use of it? Chains one twenty seven. Pure godliness. Pure religion. Perfect in holiness in the fear of God. What is this valiness? Not being spotted by the word. If you are spotted, you are not godly. This devout soldier. First with whom? With Cornelius. Secondly join with Peter. What is the show? If you are a devout soldier. What is your path? You should be knit with God. Colossians one three. You should be partakers with the saints in light. A man of God. Angel of God appears. But when the time was fulfilled. Join with Peter. Knit with the apostles. Calls you to be partakers of the inheritance of the saints in light. Nextly. Forty four, forty six, this devout man received the anointing. Eleven one. All the people accepted the word of God. If you are a soldier, accept this. If you are a soldier, partake of the inheritance of the saints. If you are the soldier and you are the evil in this part. Oh Timothy. In your harness as a good soldier for Jesus Christ. Then you have the wages. Wages in heaven. Don't do violence. Don't accuse others. Be content with your anointing. Don't leave your devoutness. Never be spotted by this word. Let's close eyes. Today, the Lord is coming to make us good soldiers. Don't do violence to anyone. Don't crown others. Don't buffet others. Don't rise up against them. Don't spoil your life. Not call to accuse others. One minute, close your eyes. If you can be on your knees. Lord, you have called me as a good soldier, I surrender myself, then kneel down. The word of the Lord is for the good soldiers. God sees you as a soldier. Because he stands as a captain. And stand as a soldier behind. Stand in the front, in the battle front for bear. Don't run away turning your back like soul soldiers. Become the soldier of Cornelius. Become devout. Join with the saints in light. Receive a good anointing. Accept this word. Decide to do no violence. Decide not to accuse. God given me is enough. Those who say that close eyes. Lift up your eyes. Don't give place to your weakness. Don't give place to evil work. God is speaking to you. A message for you. My son, you are my soldier. My daughter, you are called to be a soldier. Don't be afraid of conquest. Don't be grieved. You are called for me. It is for this you are called. You are called for this. You are not called to do violence. You are not called to accuse anyone. Not called to go after running. God is anointing those who surrender. Holy ghost descended upon all in the house of Cornelius. Yes, made the spirit of God descend upon all here. Does he say I want a good soldier and lift up your hands? Right now, put on the whole armor. Take the sword of God. Use the sword of God and use your name. Sword of the Lord is the sword of Gideon. Are you not a soldier? Are you not the elect? Open your mouth and. Say the sword of the Lord and use your name. The sword of the Lord is my sword. The Lord is strengthening. You are called to be victorious. Close your eyes, strengthen yourself. You should not be defeated. In the verse ten, you are a soldier and God speaks to you. God speaks to me. I am a Christian. Today I am a Christian. I am a Christian. That is why I have a problem. But God is a merciful God. I am a merciful man. Hallelujah, you are a Christian. You must pray. God will bless you. Hallelujah, Rama, Nasa. You must pray. You must not stand. He will go. You must not stand. You must not stand. He will go. Shubala baka, thidaba katha, thidabika thoda kada. Hallelujah, hallelu. Talakartanam yesu nindre, balanin eduvarande. You must not stand. Many people stand in the future world, trying to save their lives. Because they are the saints, who look forward to Jesus. Hallelujah, you are a Christian. You are a merciful God. You are a Christian. Thidaba katha, thidabaniyara. Anandam and Tampi stand. The two brothers stand. Anandam and Tampi stand in the future world. The two brothers stand. Anandam said, Tampi. You are brave. We are for God. God will do for us. You are on my side. I am on your side. One day, if Anandam's hand breaks, you will support me. I will be there. You will be there too. We are for God. We are for God. Do you know what happened? The two of us won. That is truth. You will not stand. Your children will not stand. You are a merciful God. He is standing before us. Hallelujah. You will win. Thidaba katha, thidaba. Avaravi naal budhe bellenadayil, jaya veerai lin pidhu. Avaravi naal budhe bellenadayil. In the future world, God is a merciful God. For him we are grateful. Until now, God has given us a victory. For him we are grateful. A merciful God is a merciful God. For God, we are a faithful servant. For God, we are faithful. For him we are grateful. A merciful God is a merciful God. For him we are grateful.